I'd like to call the city council meeting of July 22, 2013 to order. We'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll call shows everybody is present, including department heads. Approval of the agenda, additions and deletions?
Yes, sir, I'd like to take the first one off and replace it with a donation from Dr. Kaplan.
I move the agenda as amended. I'll support it.
Further discussion, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Review of the minutes of July 8.
I move minutes. Second.
Any discussion? In favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Public comment, at this time if anybody wishes to speak on any item not listed on the agenda, they could do so. Please approach and state your name and address.
Carl Lutus, 390 Lennox. Just had a few comments about things that are coming up, for your information. Is this okay?
Speak. A little closer.
Our Historical Society has got its plans well, well on the way for Depot Day coming up in September. And I just want to let you know that we're planning for quite a, quite a set of festivities and I hope the weather holds good. Also of note, the Historical Society is going to need four volunteers to sit on the Board of Directors because the appointment time runs out for four members of a seven-member board, I believe, this September. So anybody that has suggestions of someone they would like to submit or encourage to, to run for that or to receive an appointment, you know, it'd be wonderfully accepted. I, I work with them, I don't need to be on the board myself to fulfill my goals. So leave the board open for other people at, for voting and participation. I'm letting you know that as council, September, the September meeting. There's a new, there's a new book in the works. We just had a book published for our behalf this past year by an outside historian regarding a good chunk of South Lion history. We have it on record over there at the, at the museum and I've used it for reference and we're researching some, some items with it. One of the past members of the committee is producing her own book and this will be another publication to come out in, hopefully December, January, it's going to be a pictoriography of decade by decade of the history of South Lion. They're going to use the Arcadia Publishing Company in Brighton. And I won't go into the name of the person that's doing it, but someone that's known to a number of us. And we're very happy about that. Also, this is the date, or this is the week, the month, and it's exactly 10 years from now. I think I mentioned this before, that our 150-year ses- sescentennial celebration is supposed to take place, hopefully. Because of my vocal aptitude, this is a little closer. This should not just be a Historical Society project, this should be a community-wide project. It's 10 years down the road and I've been talking to them about it as a person that handles research and development. But Linda asked me to let you know that this should be a community-wide project when it comes about, not just a Historical Society. We don't have anything really in place at this time, but anticipating we have to raise over 150,000 to 200,000 dollars. I believe the committee 40 years ago raised 100,000 dollars prior to the existence of the Historical Society, which was created after the historical celebration in 1973. For this, we'll need city council and Oakland County backing when the time comes. I'm just letting you know all this. We probably need a separate corporation and that would probably be an administrative detail that we have to address at a later time. And I'm just letting you know that since this is the, this is the month and this is probably the week, 10 years from now, that, that this will take place. And I think it's a timely matter to, to start considering it. Anyway, there's one other comment I wanted to make. None of you probably know it, but I've been studying the new master plan that's under, under consideration and as it's being created and the workings going on with it. And there are some recommendations that I'm going to be making. We need a master plan, we've got to have one by state law. It has to take place, we need it. But there's some other things that we also need and I don't want to sound critical, but in some respects, what we've got doesn't go far enough for futuristic developments, as I see it. Anyway, then it needs to have a creation of an oversight committee to handle the whole thing in the future, otherwise it'll be doomed to failure, like it was the last three, three decades ago. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? All right, we can move on to oh business.
There's somebody in the audience that was moving.
Come on up, now's the time, yes, absolutely. State your name and address.
Thornton Siegel, 240 Brookwood Drive. I'm also the member of Operation Injured Soldiers and I want to thank everybody who's trying to find our trailer and that four-wheeler. It really devastated us that someone would have, be so heartless to take this thing. And I want to thank everybody who's, who's helping us on this. Also, we had a motorcycle ride, July the 13th, it turned out very well, we had 223 motorcycles there and it turned out to be a beautiful day and I was really excited about getting some money for our injured soldiers because we have to take care of our soldiers. And that's what I'm here for and to, to making sure they are, be recognized and being helped. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? And now we can move on to oh business, in which we have none. New business, of which we have eight items on the new business. Number one, donation from Dr. Kaplan.
Just a little bit of a backstory here, if you'll bear with me for a moment. Some years ago, two, three years ago, Steve Runwick came into work and found that there was this big boulder in the lane of Pontiac Trail in front of Dr. Kaplan's place at 410 North Lafayette. So he got another couple of guys from the DPW and removed it and took it into, I think they put it at the DPW first, then after a year or two, put it into McCatty Park. I offered, Dr. Kaplan had called me recently about this. I looked into it, found out that we did have it and where it was, excuse me, and offered to give it back to him, but told him we couldn't put it back into the right-of-way where it was because Oakland County wouldn't allow us to do that. So, but told him we'd put it in his backyard wherever he wanted. It ends up he would like to just donate it to us and there's a $200 value on that, so I'm asking you to approve this donation of a rock, a decorative rock boulder, whatever you want to call it, in the amount of $200.
Did he just notice it was gone four years later?
No, he had called originally and, and made some complaints, we couldn't find it and it kind of died and then it was revived recently.
Okay.
I make a recommendation that we approve accepting the donation of $200 worth of rock.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? I do know an appraisal is done.
And thank Dr. Kaplan as well.
All righty.
I'm just glad he.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Homecoming parade. Any representatives here for them? Is there any comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, the high school student council would like to have the homecoming parade, the same as they did last year, going up Mill Street through the subdivision, across 11 Mile terminating at the high school. I applaud the new student council coordinator, a teacher, Nicole Kena. She actually got the application in months ahead instead of waiting till a week or two ahead. That, that's the good, good news side of the equation. The bad news is, of course, school is out, so she's off on vacation, that could be why she's not here tonight. Although I did have a conversation with her within the last couple of weeks. Made sure that she had everything under control, had business permission for the, the lineup spots and everything. So the event appears to be the same as it was last year and I would encourage council to approve the, the needed road closures so the kids can have their homecoming parade.
Did you say there was approval from Sunsteel?
No, they, they normally use two businesses on the other side of the street for their lineup. And she assured me she would have those approvals, I have not seen anything in writing on lineup approval.
Because they had, they did have some consternation over the, some delivery trucks weren't able to get in because of all the parking along the road and stuff, but actually I say, it's certainly a not that long a period of time.
It, it's basically a half hour one day out of the year. And the other thing of note is this is the Friday of Pumpkin Fest, but we've also dealt with that before.
I'll make the motion that we approve the requested road closures for the South Lion High School homecoming parade. Second.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Wait Street Project Update.
Jesse Vandy Creek is here from HRC to give us an update on that project. And by the way, I don't know if you've been up, but the Livingston County Road Commission has done their half from Rushton to Dixboro and it looks pretty nice.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Jesse Vandy Creek, Public Robin Clark, 555, Brookwood Drive, Bloomfield Hills. City Manager Murphy asked me to be present tonight to give you an update on this project. The last time I was here in front of this body, he had authorized the second half of the design and construction engineering contract for this project. I'm here to report tonight that the final design is now complete. We are only awaiting one more permit from the Road Commission for the push-button re-signalization that has to occur at the four corners of Lafayette and Pontiac Trail. Upon receipt of that permit application, the entire package will be complete and forwarded on to the M.D.O. local agency programs for a letting, likely an August letting, at the latest a September letting at this point. Since we met with you, we did have the grade inspection meeting for the project. We received comments from the state on corrections that needed to be made, changes to meet recent current specifications, et cetera. The most important thing, I guess I wanted to make sure that got conveyed, was that we provided a Lake Street Road project cost breakdown, which should have been in your council packet. And it just basically works column by column to show you where the project's at to date and where all the funding's coming from. So the total project cost in the far left-hand column you'll see is 751,300. Of that, 618, of course, is the construction cost, 133 was the combination of the design and the CE put together. And we've gone down to show where the city's cost share versus the fed's cost share is of each element of the work so that you can see that the total project cost to the city is approximately 183, 263, whereas the funds that we'll be receiving from either the feds or from the county out of the CDBG program is 568,037 dollars. Now, that's where we're at today. After the project is formally let, then we have a revised construction cost. This table will be adjusted to reflect the final contract amount that the feds will write and put on the tip, the Transportation Improvement Program. So there is another time these numbers will adjust, of course, before the final contract is awarded. But this is where we are today with the design being complete and being ready to go to bid.
The ratios stay the same though, correct, the local and the match?
Actually, our costs went down.
In the next wave, when all the bids are in and the final numbers are put together, those proportions stay the same?
The percentages.
The proportions always stay the same, as far as what the feds cover. The feds cover 80, we cover 20. The CDBJ, CDBG is a one-third, two-thirds, so none of that changes, you're right.
You had mentioned the state had, had reflected what the, whatever the upgrades or updates of what they impose onto the project are. Was there anything that seemed problematic or troubling at all?
Nothing in particularly glaring, most of it had to do with current Davis Bacon wage rates and things that are more in flux than actual specifications that would affect the design or the cost.
Not physical, but financial and administrative, okay.
Mike?
Jesse, if, once everything gets approved, when do you anticipate, depending on when you get the final contracts awarded, when do you anticipate everything starting?
Well, we intentionally went forth with this project with Livingston County Road Commission, actually, because our opportunity here actually came through the South Lion Howell-Brighton urban area. You guys were actually eligible for funding that's only available to this group. We knew that we weren't ready for this project, really, when the funds became available. So we got in line as quick as we could to get the design done to demonstrate to those folks that we, we could be shovel-ready with the notion that we would not start this project until the spring of 2014. Now, that's good for two reasons. Number one, that's truly when the tip will be written. All this has to be done just so it's actually a next year's transportation program. So administrative and funding is the first reason. Second reason is that we're undergoing, of course, the work on the DWRF and the primary elements on Lake Street are really just beginning now, down at the West End. In fact, one of the last pieces of work we'll see on that project this fall will be the jack and bore operation that has to undergo the railroad track on the far, actually at the far easterly limits of this project. So when our contractor's done this fall replacing the water main, they will create a nice clean patch with a butt joint. But come next spring, we'll be able to mill that top off and put a nice new mat over the whole thing, starting at the railroad tracks on the easterly element and running all the way to the city limits where Green Oak Township's paving limits just ended. So really, this is going to be a spring, spring, early summer, I anticipate, construction of 2014.
And once the project started, how long do you anticipate it lasting? Guesstimate?
Guesstimate, 60 to 90 days.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
60 to 90 days?
60 to 90 days.
That includes what, because they did theirs in a weekend?
This is.
That includes everything?
This, yeah, that's everything, from, from notice of intent to award to final payment. And what we have that they don't have is a paving project through urban area, whereas their paving project was really through an agricultural area. We have structures to adjust, we have curb to deal with. We have major intersection shutdowns to go through at Lake and Pontiac Trail to facilitate the crosswalk removal. There's going to be an entire shutdown of the downtown intersection there for approximately three to four weeks of time, much like occurred nearly 10 years ago in the first phase of the DDA program. So there are a lot more elements to this project going through the heart of downtown than there were just going through a rural stretch.
And it was a little more than a week, I exaggerated, on a weekend, I apologize. It was like a week.
So, I, I'm guessing 30, again, 60 to 90. That should be from the pre-construction meeting to final punch list.
This also has all the ADA compliant sidewalk ramps too, right?
It has too, that's correct. We'll be dealing with, we have, we, we ended up having to obtain nine easements for those ramps that currently don't meet ADA, where we've had to lay the landing where it matches the edge of curb or back of curb flat to meet current ADA requirements, not 8.3 percent, flat, and then come up at 8.3 percent. So what's happened is at each of those corners, we've had to do a mini grading design that have resulted in having to build a curb on the back of the sidewalks. And you'll see that's very common in every community now because we have to meet these ADA compliance standards. What didn't happen before and happens now is they actually come out with a smart level and put it right on there before they'll final the job out at every intersection. You'll notice that on, when we did the Phase 1 of the DDA, none of those standards were in full effect. That's why there's no truncated domes at each of the, that's why they're not flat. They go in at 8.3, not anymore. It has to be a flat landing for a specific area.
How wide does that flat landing need to be, like how deep?
It depends on the type, whether it's a Type 1, 2, or 3, how they're coming together, whether that sidewalk is an L, an offset, whether it's a traditional T, or whether it's what they call a pan. They won't let us do the pans anymore, you still have to put a curb hump in the middle now. So they're all different, it all depends on what you have there. It's, it's become much more complex. Like I said, we didn't anticipate any easements in this project. And as it turns out, and you've probably heard this from some business owners, we've had to go and obtain nine. And luckily, they've all worked with us very well, we've, we've been able to create a documentation to avoid the bill of sale and instead, and successfully pursuing consent agreements, which is a new approach and I think, I believe we have them all now.
Were these vehicles, legal vehicles, created because of this issue? The consent as opposed to, yeah?
Absolutely, yep, necessary and do meet the federal law for right-of-way acquisition, that's true. That's, again, the final item that has to go in before bid is final design, the final estimate, all of the easements necessary for the project and all the permits necessary for the project. Now that being said, we actually do have the RCOC permit to do the work in the right-of-way. They're fine with the work, it's the push-button signalization, which is actually a separate permit from that department. And that's the last one.
This has the new lighting too, isn't it? When we did RCOC, the meeting with them, the lights that are on the far side of the intersections on all four sides of Lake and Lafayette?
Talking about the traffic signals.
The crosswalks, the crosswalk.
We are not.
No, the signaling.
We are not going, we were initially concerned that that might be forced to be an element of this work. It is not, and if it were, this project would be at least six figures more. It's a significant cost element to upgrade that signalization. And I would personally like to see us figure out a way to have the Road Commission participate in that versus telling us we have to do it just because we're doing a project in the right-of-way. So we escaped a bullet on this one.
We didn't, we weren't that lucky at 9 Mile, I mean, that's the one we paid for already, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that information on that update, on Lake Street Project to be started in the late spring of next year. I see you're still on the agenda here, you might as well stand up again. Agreement with HRC for the design of the police fire parking lot.
Okay, what you should have in front of you is a proposal, it was updated July 11, 2013. And in that proposal, we describe the perceived improvements that are going to be implemented at the joint fire and police facility, primarily the parking lots, of course. There are about five major items we want to do there. If you go through there, you'll see that the existing asphalt's just distressed, it's all cracked up and it's timed. The base is just getting worse and the longer we wait, the more base we're going to have to pull out. What we'd like to do is mill that off, or actually, we're going to pulverize it in place because what's there, hopefully, is in decent shape so we can reuse it. Hopefully, we can pulverize it, minimize the amount of undercut, reshape it so it drains better, and put a new cap on it. At the same time, the idea is to, if you look at the figure was provided, an aerial, color aerial was provided in your packet that shows what we perceived as potential improvements to that parking lot, both in the, from the aspect of adding additional parking and from increasing traffic circulation through the area. Based on interviews with both fire chief and the police chief, it was perceived that ideally we would have a one-way in on the easterly entrance and a one-way out on the westerly entrance with the parking modified from a 45-degree that currently exists there to, well, at least for the Lake Street portion, it's 45-degree. You'll see on the police portion, it's already 90 at the north end of the site. Well, we can maximize the amount of parking spaces by tipping all those to 90 and then placing 90-degree parking between the police and fire building themselves. You can see there, there's an area where there's a red car parked in front of the fire station, this aerial photo, where really that'll all be marked out, cross-marked out for ingress, egress, and turning movements for the, the fire vehicles. So primarily, it's a parking lot rehabilitation program with a complete new striping, signing, and circulation layout. One of the big things too, if you look just at the police station, which would be at the upper-left part of your figure or the, the northwest portion, you'll see the carports that are back there, there are three police cars parked there now. If you go back there, you'll see that there's no drainage under that structure and it's a low spot and right now, water accumulates during rain events up to the curb and spills right over into the yard over there. I don't know how that ever got constructed that way or laid out that way. But this does actually include drainage improvements to the area. The estimate, I believe, shows that we've got approximately 80 new feet of 12-inch diameter reinforced concrete storm sewer pipe with a new two-foot diameter inlet, you know, only what we need for that area, and then a four-foot diameter manhole to tap the existing sewer that's out in Whipple. So really, it's just to clean up that whole area and make it usable all the time, not just when it's dry. That being said, those are the major elements of work. We've laid out what we believe are fees to be for the project on page 3 of 3 of the text. And in response to the last time I was in front of council regarding a budget, at the very last part of the proposal, there's a spreadsheet with HRC's logo at the bottom where what I've done there at the very top, under the, whether it's staff hour by labor category, you'll see the actual contract rate that we have in place for each of the three top, if you will, pay scales that are going to be working on this project. That's the rate in your contract and these are the hours by task that we expect each person in that category to execute over the term of the project.
Mike?
First of all, I want to thank you for the breakdown. It makes it a little easier to figure out why it's costing us as much as it is. I do have one question regarding one of the items on, I believe, your engineer's estimate. It's item number 17 for the dumpster screen wall, the amount of $15,000. Is that just something to enclose the dumpster?
Well.
Or is that the pad too and the bricks or, I mean.
It's basically three-quarters of a garage. Well, if you go out there right now, the dumpster is actually laying out in the parking lot and it really moves around in that corner when you're making your turning movement there sometimes, depending on where it gets dropped off, it floats. And the, the plan was, was to, there's a grass area that's not being used at all, that's really off the parking lot. Doesn't come into play on anybody's turning radius where we could easily construct a new dumpster with a screen wall. we could easily construct a new dumpster with a screen wall. And what that would be, that would basically match the aesthetics of what you see in the Well Street parking lot. In other words, it would be a concrete masonry, three-sided structure with a four-foot foundation on it because of the weight and the height, can't tip and fall over. It'll be faced with brick to match the adjacent buildings, and it'll have a lockable gate on it as well. So it should really clean up the area. You won't see the dumps, right now, the dumpster's kind of an eyesore, especially when you're public coming into your police and fire off of Lake Street. Primarily, it's meant to clean it up and make that site more secure as it is to the floating dumpster.
Does it have to be concrete, the sides? I mean, I've seen
I could make it out of wood if you wanted, it just obviously wouldn't be
Low maintenance.
Yes, it wouldn't last very long. The idea behind this is this is something you build and you leave it, you don't have to do anything to it for probably, you know, maybe some tuck pointing in ten or fifteen years from the, you know, like a traditional, any kind of brickwork, but that's really about it. Anything else, you're constantly gonna be rehabbing it, and it's gonna deteriorate.
What's the lifespan of the new, the asphalt we're putting in the parking lot? Is that like seven to ten?
Yeah, about seven to ten. It's not a complete excavate, it's not like we're rebuilding this thing from the base up, we're gonna pulverize it and put a cap on it. So yeah, I'd say that's a good estimate of time, seven to ten.
I don't know, it just, it seems a lot for something to cover up a dumpster.
It's one of those one-time single investments that pays dividends for decades though, when it really comes to trying to clean up your downtown. I've been involved with meetings with the DDA on trying to figure out what we're gonna do with the dumpsters in the Lake Street alley for time and time again, and it's just a problem until you find them a home. And then you find them a home, and it's good.
Any new commercial building has to have a dumpster?
They all do. If you go to, the latest one is really the planned use development. If you go to, you know, the area, the Rite Aid up there, you look at everything they've done in the rear, everything, even though it's in the rear, it's still got an enclosure around it with a gate.
I understand that.
That's your zoning ordinance, actually. So, to not do this in this area and do anything different might require, at least for Planning Commission, to take a look at it.
We don't have the same obligations, but it's just good to follow in kind, that's all.
Well, I guess my only concern is, is that at some point, ten, fifteen years down the road, I have a hunch that a certain gentleman over there, or a certain gentleman over there are gonna say, hey, these buildings are kinda old, you know, what are we gonna do about updating, you know, the police station or the fire station? And I just, it'd be great, I mean, I'm sure it's gonna look nice and everything like that for fifteen thousand dollars, but what happens in fifteen years if we have to knock it down, if we're gonna do new construction or anything like that in that area?
There'll be thirty thousand then?
Yeah, it will be thirty thousand. But I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, I mean, it's a great idea to put a, something that'd be kinda permanent for the next twenty or thirty years for this concrete, you know, wall. But my concern is, looking down the road, what happens if we do have to expand or if we have to do something which is gonna put that in the way and we have to knock it down? That's
Valid question.
That's the only concern I have about spending that kinda money just for something to screen it down.
And certainly, this list of, call them wants, because that's a want, and that's not necessarily a need, I believe was been meant to maintain real consistency with what you have in your other parking lots. Now, going forward, that's not saying that we can't put it just simply on a concrete pad back there if that's your, you know, preference, but again, I, it's really
I think he's thinking along the line of fencing around it. And the other thing is, locking the gate doesn't do any good because if somebody's gonna dump there, they'll throw it up and over. I owned a car wash for fifteen years here, and we never locked it after a while for that reason. They just throw it, and that's a worse mess that way, of course. Because your tops are down generally in there, and then it's all heaped on top of that, so I would, I can see having a gate front on it, but I wouldn't even bother locking it. And also, I would think a wood wall around that would be fine for now, personally.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm looking.
Well, quite frankly, the way this would proceed, if you authorized the design, is we would put together preliminary design anyway, so we could work together with you and the fire chiefs to develop a reasonable solution that you don't feel is an over expenditure of funds for this. Certainly, we can shroud it and enclose it with, you know, still gotta be on a pad if we wanna get out of the parking lot. So we've still gotta excavate and put down a good six-inch-thick concrete pad, maybe even reinforced because the thing gets dropped a lot. And on the sides, we could certainly put up just four-by-four posts and a shadow box wood fence on three sides, if that's acceptable.
An inflatable dumpster.
Okay, then on, one other thing I wanted to mention, if you notice the picture of the angled cars, well, they're angled for a reason. Because when, to try and go straight in and back out is difficult.
I thought that seemed awfully narrow.
Because there's, as Glenn can tell you, there's a sidewalk also there along that side where there's a shadow, and there's just literally no room to back straight out and then try to cut around cars. And that's why it's always been angle parking there forever.
Well, and the angle parking, if you look at that red car that's there, is actually facing the wrong way. To make this site work properly, the circulation should go the other direction. You notice that? And that's another thing, even if that is a concern, at least for that row, we could still turn those, that set on a forty-five by, and still maximize the lots that are along the western property line. So that's another design compromise that could be made. And by doing that, instead of having ten parking spaces there along the police, we probably end up with nine.
But Jesse, if you look where the police building is, the offset between that and the fire building, it's a much narrower drive through that section there, that's why the angle parking is there.
Understood.
Yeah. Lloyd, is this driveway, is that going by your office so you can see who's coming in late?
I didn't think about that, but that could be a fringe benefit.
And again, guys, this is, you know, design on Google Maps. This isn't going out there and doing the topo and really splitting six inches to see if we can
I think you'll find though that that's
Exactly, we can refine
We don't wanna create another CBS, I mean
Oh, good, yeah.
Now, I agree, that section, we could tip on an angle, you might lose one space. But again, we're already, we were talking about with this configuration, having nine more, so you have eight more. That's still an incredible increase when you consider the value of a parking space in downtown South Lion.
Yes, Joe.
Yeah, I noticed the same thing as Mike did from this dumpster screen wall, and I guess my question is, why weren't we presented with options going in here? I mean, because it seems like the constant theme is that we're getting the Cadillac version when we could have maybe a Camry or sorta version put to us. I mean, seriously, fifteen thousand dollars, if we can do something for, I don't know, half that price, we can save seven, eight thousand dollars, and we can live with it and it's good and good quality, then I'd like to see that put forward for us.
And that's what this process is for.
Well, this is preliminary.
This is preliminary, right. This was based on an interview with both of the chiefs and the city manager in the field, spending a full couple hours out there, walking around, looking at everything out there. They wanted this to look like the parking lots in town, whether they're city parking lots or whether they're private development parking lots, they all have this. So we can certainly, through the design process, come up with a reduced version. I was not tasked with bringing you four or five different options for a dumpster screen by engineering proposal.
Is this gonna end up going to the Planning Commission? Is this going to the Planning Commission?
I didn't think it needed to, it can.
I mean, it seems to me that's something that they, you know, that's why we have a consultant and everything else to figure some of this stuff out for us. Now we're asked to be a planning commission right now doing this.
Well, I think we're just asked to approve
We're just doing design.
This is your current standard. Your planning commission would be looking for this. You would be looking for an exception from your planning commission to do anything less.
Joe?
Yeah, but if we were to come in and approve this as it is, I'd be very surprised if it doesn't get put in there for the fifteen thousand dollars. Unless we brought it up today.
You're only approving the design so we can make adjustments to that design.
Okay, well, I have another question, that's on, just for my clarification, on the difference between a crew day and a resident representative, are those two different type of people, engineers?
Same person. The resident rep that's referred to or shown in your breakdown of my hours, if you'll go to the very last sheet, item number six, resident rep, there are seventy-two hours total. Seventy-two hours, that's not even two weeks' time for a full construction project on this site. What we've done is we've included a line item for observation crew days in the contract so that if the contractor goes over that amount because of his ability to proceed, his efficiency or lack thereof, then that money will be taken out of what's owed to him and given back to you under this budget. Ten days was what we said.
So thirty, thirty-nine hundred, that one? Just maybe I'm confused, but I see it, resident representative, sixty-seven hundred.
Because ten days are attributed to the contractor's work. There are seventy-two hours total of time that it takes for my resident rep to do all of his work outside of what's just construction. There are pre-construction meetings, there are pay requests, there are administrative contract interpretations. Two weeks of time for a hundred and thirty thousand dollar construction contract is extremely tight as it is.
Go ahead, Joe.
And then, I don't have this figure in front of me, but Mr. Murphy, do you know how much we paid for the Well Street parking lot?
No, I don't, I know, no, I have no idea.
Did you say Whipple Street?
Well, I'm sorry, I apologize, Whipple Street, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Whipple Street, I apologize.
He meant Whipple Street.
Yeah.
Whipple Street, I think that ended up being, do you remember, Jesse, it came in around ninety-seven, I think, and we had budgeted a hundred and something for it? Came in lower than what we had budgeted for. In fact, we still have some money left in CDBG for that.
But in the ballpark, yeah.
Okay, anybody else?
I guess I'll make the motion then that we approve the design services in the amount of thirty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty dollars for the police and fire parking lot.
I'll second, yeah.
Further discussion?
I'd just like to say, Jesse, thank you again for the breakdown. It's, it makes it a lot easier to understand where the money is going as far as, and I appreciate the fact that you actually did it this time, so thank you.
Moving forward, I'll continue.
I appreciate it, thank you.
And as a comment, just to point out again, this is for the design work. We're gonna get another bite of the apple when we see this all come back, right?
This is actually for the design and the CE for us. The only thing that will change will be likely the bid price, and hopefully, it comes in a bit lower. We like to try to estimate these, you know, on the conservative side, so we're not coming back and saying, the product's gonna cost a lot more.
Okay, thank you. And if this gets approved, do you want it to go to Planning Commission?
I would think that's the proper procedure.
Well, they're going to tell you they want that concrete or that block enclosure for the dumpster. I don't know, we can certainly do that if you like, I'm looking for direction from council.
I don't think it's in good taste for us to ask other people to do things that we're not willing to do ourselves.
That's my opinion.
Or good faith, I guess I should've said.
Well, I don't think we need to send these things to the Planning Commission. We normally, I can't recall us doing that on any project.
No, we haven't.
Especially parking lots. Yeah. But we do try to adhere to our own zoning ordinance. And I agree that we probably should.
When it's reasonable. I mean, there's been signed things in that that we've
You're absolutely correct, yes.
He's on shaky ground doing that.
You know, we don't, we don't fit the same role as commercial business does, so every now and then, we'll end up getting outside the boundaries we would allow somebody else to do, but we try to keep within the, within the lines as much as possible.
Hey, you commented, Jesse, that you, this was done by just using Google Maps?
The aerial that I pulled that off was Google Maps. The work that it took to laying out the number of parking spaces, the circulation, estimating the quantities, was another couple of days' worth of engineer's work. I'm just saying that we didn't go out there and do a topographic survey yet to be able to lay out the lines for parking spaces where six inches is critical. This was done just off an aerial picture to give you an idea, it's a schematic, there is no detailed design yet. We would do that if this is approved and get your opinions and approvals and bring any updates.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose?
Aye.
Aye.
Want to do a roll?
Roll call? Kevell?
Yes.
Kipkowski?
Yes.
Reisi?
No.
Wallace?
No.
Waddell?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Move on to agreement for active adults, or Center for the Active Adults Agreement, where we share duties with, I believe, both Green Oak and Lion Township are in on this as well, fortunately.
Yes, sir, that's correct. I think the only difference this year than any other year, it's, I think, about sixty dollars more, and that's just based on participation. So there was a few more people participating, so. But it's run through the schools, there is a board representative from Green Oak, from Lion Township and in the city, which is me. But we have a new director, things are going pretty well, so I would ask that you approve this contract in the amount of forty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-two dollars.
You make that motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the agreement with the South Lion Community Schools for Senior Citizen Programs in contribution of forty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-two dollars.
Further discussion? All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Pose? A donation acceptance.
This is another donation, and I put this, I just put this on your table tonight, I failed to put it in your packet, I apologize for that. But it's a note from a nice elderly lady who wanted to donate fifteen dollars towards any of our children's programs because of the good service she received from South Lion Cycle and their fair and reputable service, to be accurate. So I thought we could take that fifteen dollars and put it towards our donation or our portion of the South Lion Area Rec Authority. I'll make the motion that we accept fifteen-dollar donation from Ms. Shirley Carfis with our thanks.
Further discussion? I'd like to comment that I wish there was a way we could adjust that particular ordinance enough to the point that if it's under a certain amount, that the city manager can take care of it and send thanks and let everybody know, I don't know, something like that needs to come before council like that.
It took two seconds.
We've just, yeah, spent thirty-five seconds.
I understand that, but I'm just saying it's
She deserves recognition.
Yeah, it's nice that it's publicly aired as well.
It's not everybody who opens up their wallet and donates money to the city. And the South Lion Cycle got kudos too, it didn't take us any time.
Okay. All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Pose? Police firearms trade-in, chief?
Yes, we have sixteen various assorted firearms, mostly thirty-eight caliber handguns, owned by the city and police department. They have not been used for years, they've been replaced by, for the most part, by our forty-caliber semi-automatic pistols. They're sitting in our police property room, and Sergeant Baker would like to get them out of there. Much to his credit, Sergeant Baker went out and got a couple of estimates and then bargained back and forth and got, got the one bidder, Gander Mountain, to up their bid by a couple hundred dollars. I and he feel that the bid from Gander Mountain is a very fair price for those no longer needed weapons, and we'd like to have council's authorization to dispose of them to Gander Mountain, who's a federally licensed firearms dealer. So, city attorney didn't have any liability issues with disposing of the weapons in that manner. And what we would wind up with would be a store credit for either firearms, accessories, or ammunition to save the city a few dollars from the general fund for those items.
I thought it made perfect sense, quite honestly. I thought it made perfect sense, quite honestly. I was, the only thing I was wondering, weren't there three shotguns?
There are.
Do you not use shotguns in your cruisers anymore?
We still use those, however, we still use shotguns, over those three have been replaced by semi-automatic shotguns.
Oh, some more modernized, yeah, okay.
If I could've known that, I would've traded Mike.
Joe?
Yeah, I just wanna give credit to Sergeant Baker. I feel this is a really good negotiation, as we see from the initial offer from Michigan Police Equipment of two thousand fifteen dollars. There was certainly some room that could be actual value of, of the firearms getting up to thirty-one hundred, so, chief, very good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll make the motion that we approve the trade-in in the amount of thirty-one hundred dollars to Gander Mountain.
I'll support that.
Further discussion? Personally, I'd rather they just be taken over the tube mill and thrown into the melting vats of the steel, but I understand.
If the tube mill would give us thirty-one hundred bucks, I'd be all for it.
Yeah. Gun-plated tubing. Okay, y'all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Pose? That was tongue in cheek.
Hard to tell.
Hard to tell. Okay, managers evaluation. Dave, we could have you start off if you like, I'm doing a little, there'll be, if there's comments from the council, they agreed to do it on a name by basis and draw them on a hat, but that's down there.
I really have no comments, I think I'm doing a very good job, thank you.
Okay. I almost had a Michigan hat, but with a couple state guys on the panel here, I figured I'd get in trouble for that, so. This one's from the Virgin Islands. And we're drawing names, and whoever gets drawn first gets to speak first and so forth. And that would be... Anybody wanna claim that signature?
That's mine.
Okay.
Dave, you're a heck of a guy.
I know.
Sort of a hero. No, excuse me.
Anybody got water?
Actually, there's, there's a number of things that I'm, I'm very happy about when you came on board. I, I think that you have a great relationship with all the bodies that are outside of the city, I mean, your relationship with DDA, with Chamber, with the Rec Authority. I feel very comfortable that, that there's a, a back and forth relationship, that you guys can speak freely, everybody can speak their opinion, and that you represent the city and put us in the best position that is able to take place. I've, I really do appreciate that, I, I think that the business owners downtown, and nothing is monolithic, but I mean, for the most part, people are quite comfortable that they're being represented in the city fairly, and, you know, that any, any kind of thing that is imposed on them is something that, that makes sense, and they feel comfortable if they don't like what's taking place. They seem to feel comfortable about coming and having a conversation with you and seeing if there might be some wiggle room on, on whatever the problem is. I think the relationship with the staff is, is very good. And, and I think that that says an awful lot, because I, I don't, everyone likes to, to always picket the boss, you know, I mean, he's a, a nice cheap shot for, for the guys to get around and, you know, find faults, why the job isn't perfect, kind of a thing. And I don't think that there's an awful lot of that going on. I think that you seem to have a, a relationship with both the, the managers as well as the staff that, that seems pretty comfortable. It's not to say that I'm, there's not things that I don't, that I think could use some improvement. There was, there was a comment in here about, I think it was Ted's, that, you know, that you seem to respond to the advice or recommendation or request of a single council person more strongly than what might be best suited, I guess, you know, rather than having the body make a decision, someone will make a, a recommendation and you'll act on it as, as an individual response. And, you know, I mean, in, in light of all the things that I think are on the plus side, the minor things that I think could use some tweaking, I'm happy that you're, you're managing our city, so.
Okay.
How's that?
Yeah, I think that's...
All right. Draw a new one.
David, first of all, I wanna thank you, I think you're doing a, a good job. I think it's very difficult, your position, dealing with a lot of different people in the community, different departments, different interests, different motivations, and managing everybody, and overall, I think you're doing actually a great job managing the staff and the personnel, and the city as a whole. I know that whenever residents have concerns, that you will get back to them right away, that's what I've been told, and only positive feedback, I've never heard anything negative come from one resident, so I think that's a very good accomplishment. First of all, thank you for having this meeting open to the public. I think that is very crucial to have open meetings such as this, so especially when taxpayers' dollars are involved, so they could see all of the happenings within the city, so thank you for making this open to the public. Some things I wanted to make aware is that I do see some potential increases for people's taxes to raise, which kinda disappoints me, but I wanted to go through a few of them, and that is, as, as it says in the budget, and correct me if I'm wrong, with two thousand fifteen, the, the water millage may need to be increased. Also, we're talking about a potential rec center that may increase people's taxes. Also, I heard recently, I don't know if this is finalized, but there's a potential for a school millage, for a new school in eleven mile.
Hey, that's out of my control.
I know, I know, I'm just giving some facts and leading to a point. And then on top of that, we just had water rate increases and, which we'll be having for many years to come, and we, and a good note, on a positive note, we will have home values increasing, probably in the near future, so with home values increasing, of course, property taxes will increase, so people are definitely gonna be paying higher taxes, I think so. So with that being said, my comment is that we need to be diligent in, in watching every dollar, and it's not directed at you, 'cause I know you've kept us in the black and doing a sound budget. It's just, we'd like to keep echoing that sentiment to all the department heads, that we watch every dollar. And I requested last year, it'd be nice to see some sort of a tracking of some cost-saving ideas or grant ideas where we could be saving money. I would like to see something like that, hopefully the next few months. And just a couple items I think we should focus on is closing, closing MERS, having a resolution on that, or at least a, a direction of when we're gonna be closing that with the pension. Also, Colonial Acres with the, with the water lines, finalizing who's gonna be responsible for Phase Four and Five. And then also, I'd like to see Pontiac Rail, talked about widening Pontiac Rail, I mean, the, the small portions that South Lion is responsible for. 'Cause I, I guess many residents probably can relate with me, when I'm sitting down Pontiac Rail for at least fifteen minutes to go one mile, it's just a little unacceptable, and we need to do whatever we can to widen the, the spots that we are responsible for, even though, even if it is a small portion. So with that being said, overall, I think you're doing a good job. I would go as far as say a great job, and keep up the good work, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I went back and, and looked a few, some of my notes from oh-nine, ten, eleven, and kinda related those to the evaluation this time, and I have put a lot of time in on the financial end of it, that's my primary interest. And now we've, since two thousand eight, we lost several millions of dollars in SEV, and we've come through now that point in time with our fund balance intact, with our services intact, with our staff intact. Those were probably the most trying times in, in any of our memories. We've also had some difficulty, personnel issues this year that were successfully navigated, and I know it took a lot of your time, effort, and probably blood, sweat, and tears.
Yeah, I had a heart attack.
Yeah, you had a heart attack. But without going, you know, without going into chapter and verse on all of that, I think you've done a heck of a job and continue to do a heck of a job, and I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
But you know Bob Martin.
Hey, that always helps. It wouldn't be right if that name didn't come up at least once in a meeting.
We're running out of time.
I know Bev's got one comment on this. It's your turn.
I can't speak, sorry. I, I would like to see the Colonial Acres issue settled pretty soon, but we need some more meetings on that.
If I may just respond to that.
Doing a good job.
We've set up the, the dates and...
Trying.
I, I know, but, but we were, I mean, the attorney, the engineer, myself, we had our dates all set.
Yeah.
So it's put off, but it's, it's in Colonial Acres' hands to give us some more dates.
I did, but they weren't acceptable, so, we're still trying.
Okay.
But you are doing a good job.
Well, thank you very much, and we'll be glad to meet anytime.
Thank you.
Dave, I really have no complaints. As you know, from all my multiple phone calls at all hours of the day, I find that you're available twenty-four seven. I've called you at seven-thirty in the morning, I've called you at nine o'clock at night, on my way home from work, I call you. If you're not available, I leave a message and you call me right back, I appreciate that. So we do have a city manager that is available twenty-four seven. Saturday night, our city manager, along with Mr. Martin, we're cleaning up at the, following the Brew's Blues, I'm sorry, Blue, what is it?
Brew's.
Yes, right, it's at twelve o'clock, we're downtown, and our city manager is picking up trash barrels, helping the Chamber of Commerce clean up. I mean, I can't tell you, I mean, I'd be, I'd be amazed if you saw any other city managers of any cities actually helping clean up after a performance which benefits our town. And this is not the only time, I mean, I've been calling you a lot on this rec center, brainstorming. David is our point person in dealing with Lion Township and Green Oak. Because of David's involvement, I have a really good working relationship now with Green Oak Township, I have a good relationship with Lion Township, and I just find that whenever I have a question, I call. If I don't get the answer from you right away, you check into it, and I do get the call back. So I really appreciate the effort that you're spending in our city. I know you don't actually live in the city, but, no, no, that's not a, no, it's not a...
I know, I feel bad about that.
It's just, it's a situation where I've seen you in the city helping out at more and more functions since I've been on city council over the last three years, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, those of you that know me, I am a Red Wing fan, and when I go to Red Wing games and people clap when they save a goal, I'm not one of those people, because I believe that that's their job and they get paid millions to do it, nobody needs to clap for them. So that's kind of what I feel with your evaluation, you come to work, you do your basic job, I'm not gonna stroke your ego. There is other people on the council that took care of that for you. My main thing is that if I don't have, it's not complaints, but there's always room for improvement, and if you don't offer some constructive criticism, I don't think that I'm doing my job as a city council person. So I do have some constructive criticism, and I'm, my main thing is that I believe that you rely on the outside services too much, that the, the attorney, HRC, Bob, even though he's an inside service, I just, a lot of times I call and ask you a question and you say, I need to check with so-and-so, I need to check with so-and-so, I need to check with so-and-so. I would like you to be able to answer more of the questions and be aware of more of what's happening in town, instead of always having to check with an outside service or, or your department heads. I mean, I know that you rely on them for a lot and everything like that, but I'd just like you to kinda know the answer, maybe double-check with them, but actually kinda know the answer. So that's my corrective criticism. I'd also like to add, I was reviewing your contract, and in the spirit of trying to minimize future payments out by the city, like with the union contracts and stuff that we're going through, and you're looking at, you know, keeping some of our future costs down with their pensions and the way that they get paid out and, you know, MERS and all that stuff that we're going on, I was looking at your con, your contract, and under termination, it says the employer agrees, however, in the event the manager's termination by affirmative vote of the city council, he will receive a six-month pay and benefits in the effect commencing the date of his termination. I'd like to lower that month pay.
I'd rather raise that, actually.
Pardon?
I'd rather raise that, I'm, I'm not gonna lower that.
Okay.
That's all I have, Erin. For a manager to get another job takes probably at least nine months to a year. Six months is actually on the low side for managers.
Okay, well, I guess there's no compromise on your part.
No.
Is there any compromise on your contract?
This is my livelihood, but... I guess I'd like to sit down and talk about it if you want, but I'd rather do that in a different setting.
Okay. I just think you're, you're asking other people in the city to compromise, and I think you should make some compromise too, whether it's in...
I do make those same compromises, Erin. When our insurance gets lowered, my insurance gets lowered.
I agree.
But I don't come to it from that perspective, I come from it from the manager's perspective. I never take into consideration my personal feelings or what it's gonna do to my livelihood, I can't. So, no, I'm not willing to reduce that, not at all.
Fair enough. I'm done.
Okay, thanks. A lot of my area is in communication. I'd say easily fifty percent of the time that we have a council meeting, I ask for managers' report, and you really have nothing to report, and I don't care if you gotta make up that the circus is coming to town next month or something, anything, I think you should be having something for the community to hear what's, what's going on.
Actually, it is coming to town next month. I guess I...
Let me... Again, easily half the time you don't have any comment to make, I mean, after, from two week to three periods in between, it seems to me there'd be something that you'd like to share with the community, but by, certainly by our local TV, and maybe the paper will pick up on it, too. Again, I also have the concerns about the Colonial acre issue, and it sounds like things are winding up finally on that, and that's good. As far as staff within, that you work with within the offices, I think, I think you need to, if you've got an issue with somebody, maybe take them into your office and talk to them about it versus public dressing downs. And I, again, it was mentioned about the, we have to address the retirement problems down the road, and it's, and I think you are trying to work on that. And I've stated before, if nothing else, I wish you lived in the school district, if not in the city, it just makes you feel more part of us, I think. And seeking grants, we hope that we can come across some more grants. And with that, I just hope that, like I say, it all comes down to communication, keeping the communications up. You do answer my calls, you get back to my calls, I appreciate that. You're willing to, I find you're willing to listen on certain things that you may not agree to, but you're willing to listen, and... And I think that's a huge benefit to us. You're willing to listen to us out. And again, that's a very big positive. And I think you mesh well with, I've been to official meetings, and you and I have been to many meetings together and so forth. You represent us very well there. And so you certainly have some merit to your job, and your job is thankless. You are the boss. The boss is not well-liked usually. It's just the way it is in society. But again, I think a little more communication, things can help a little bit.
I will work on that.
And that's the end of the evaluation. Now, we need a manager's report.
Oh, I've got nothing. No, I'm just kidding. I wanted to let you know that there was an article in the paper the other day about the intersection closing for like six weeks, it said. That's not quite correct. There will be intermittent lane closures. It may close down for a few days. I'll have much better information tomorrow, tomorrow, after our progress meeting. And I have set up a meeting for the business owners or anyone who lives in the downtown, or anybody who cares about the downtown and that intersection closing for 1 o'clock tomorrow afternoon. So if you know of anybody, I've tried to go around to the businesses downtown. I've had them put it on Facebook, told them to tell their friends. The press is supposed to be there, so hopefully they'll get something out in the paper, once we have a better schedule and a handle on it. It looks right now, like right now, it should be, the actual work being done will be done around August 22nd through September 6th. But I think just Pontiac Trail will be closed. But again, I don't have all the final details, so I have to consult with the consultants and the contractors, and I will get better information tomorrow afternoon.
By press, do you mean the Herald?
Yes.
Okay. Just the way you said the press, I just wanted to clarify this.
Maybe New York Times.
I thought Wall Street was coming.
That's all I have, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council comments. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, I had a lot of fun in town this last weekend. Friday at the Concert in the Park, and Saturday at the Brew's and Hot Dogs Festival. That was too bad about that, but the music was good, the company was good. I saw a lot of folks I knew, and everybody had a smile on their face. So good for us, good for the Chamber, and that's all I had. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
The rec center. Again, the two firms that were selected are going to be presenting their pitch to the South Line Rec Authority on Wednesday, July 24th at 2:00 PM. That will take place in Green Oak Township. And the idea is sometime in August, probably not the first meeting in August, but the second council meeting in August, we're going to take our Traveling Road Show to the various boards, Green Oak, Lion Oak, or Lion Oak, Green Oak, Lion Township, and South Line. But I'm hoping that we can get on the agenda for the second meeting in August, so we can give an update to my council as far as what's going on, as far as the conceptual design, the firm that was selected, and the next steps that we're planning on taking. Thank you.
Are we still approaching Salem Township?
No.
No?
No.
Have they given you a defined answer?
Nope. So, that's an answer. We are getting to the point now where it's a little too late.
Not to decide is to decide.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I hope they would at least contact us, but as today's day, they have not. So thank you.
Bev?
I just want to say I liked the Brew's, whatever the word.
She lost her voice screaming at the rock and roll band.
Yeah, to see all the people out enjoying themselves.
I saw you managed to walk out of there, so you did well.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Yep. Hey, Joe?
Yeah, just a question for Mr. Murphy. I'm not exactly clear on the DWRF progress. Are they behind? Because I'm getting conflicting information. Is it on track? Or if they're behind, how far behind? What's the status?
No, actually, they're quite a bit ahead of the schedule. We didn't expect it to finish until next year, and they'll probably finish up this fall.
We're 80% complete. I don't know where you heard that, but we're way ahead.
No, just based off the article from the Herald, I wanted to get it cleared up.
Yeah, no, they're much further ahead than we expected.
From the press?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
That's what they are.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Aaron?
Well, I felt like Harvey was stalking me this weekend, because I saw him everywhere I went in town. So I was at the Concert in the Park on Friday. Really, that was a good one. That was a good one. Nice selection, doing a good job. And I enjoyed the Brew's and the Brew's. And I'm going to leave it at that.
Well, the IGA sold a lot of brats.
For people that had a taste for them.
Yeah. Glenn?
I saw the Concert in the Park, too, on Friday night. I enjoyed that. We had the benefit of some, we caught a break with the weather. It boomed around us, but it went around us. So the issue with the Porta John and the cemetery, now with it having been, when this was proposed, the principal argument had been to be able to be a benefit to the people that were, you know, trying to go to the cemetery to pay the respects or whatever. And now it's morphed into being a restroom for the people that are gardening in the park. And I just don't think that it's appropriate that we're spending a monthly allotment of whatever the rental fee is for, I don't know, 20 people, I think it is, that live in town that are farming in the cemetery. So I personally would either like it to be moved towards where the maintenance buildings are, you know, those are the oldest grave sites in the whole place, so their heirs are typically not going to spend an awful lot of time down in the cemetery that they would...
Sure, I will answer it in a minute.
That area is trafficked a little bit less with more contemporary and current people. But yeah, I just don't, if we're not going to do something like that, then I would just see the thing pulled out of there.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's true.
I follow right on that. It's actually more beneficial where it is at, because the newest graves with the people that are still other relatives alive are down in that area, and it's really more beneficial to that side of the cemetery itself. So I think it worked out to a positive. Okay, and also, I have to put out requests. I need volunteers. We need people to become part of the Historic Commission. I need a Planning Commission person. I need people to apply. And to do that, you go into, you come to City Hall, or you can do it online, and send an application in. But we need some people to volunteer, if they can, because it certainly is a volunteer job. But on the Historic Commission's side of it, it does not have to be a city resident, but Planning Commission, it does have to be a city resident. And Historic Society would like very much to have some people join them as well, as they're down to a handful of people. I think Carl alluded to that. It's, they've got depot days coming up. They're very short on manpower. And it's really a fun thing, if you've been to our Witch's Hat Museum, and the village itself, and how important it is to our community. We hope we can get some more volunteers to join in, because age has taken hold of some of our prominent workers there. In the DWRF, I had a personal experience. I thought I had an oil well for a moment. I had a geyser come up in my yard, but it was brown, and I knew it wasn't oil. So, and it was just some of the things that people had to deal with when they were putting those, pushing those water lines through. And so I got an extra hole in my yard, by the way, for that one, because they had to dig down and take care of that one. But hopefully, to get the connections done on that. It's been almost a month now since they've been down, particularly in my block. And I know you say you're ahead of schedule, so it sounds promising to me.
I was asked today by a citizen if they get a little note in their box that says, "Water will be shut off on this day," and nobody ever comes and nobody shuts off the water. Do they just assume their water's shut off every day? Like, how does that work?
We have an observant engineer on job, and he would adjust that by going up and knocking on a door or reissuing a new flyer.
Okay, so they're to assume that they're going to have water until they get a knock or a flyer?
And, you know, with the rain that has occurred over the last two weeks, it throws some, and then we had a couple water main breaks that pulled a lot of people from over here to over here. So things happen along the way. We're approaching 80% completion on this job. We're almost through the worst part.
I was asked, and I just wanted to know how to address it properly.
And Pontiac are going to be tough.
It was on that subject, so.
Once it's pulled, what Ted was speaking of tying in individual homes, that's not dangerous work. That's not work that's going to break future mains or sewer leads. That's just individual ties to home. It's good stuff.
Sorry, I just thought I'd jump on while...
It was on that same subject. It was all right. And with that, I have to call for an adjournment.
Oh, could I, I'd like to actually ask a question on that as well. All the restoration that's taking place with the, now that the lines are pulled, you're still going to end up having to excavate to be able to make your taps to the new, tie the curb stops into the new line, right?
Yeah, but we're doing that, any block that you see sidewalks put in or patches on the road done, that's been done there.
Okay, all those taps are already tied.
So that street is done, and we're moving on.
Beautiful.
What happens when the patches sink? Like, are they going to be repatched, like the asphalt with our rain and our weather and everything? We've had those asphalt ones are going to just sink?
No, they're not going to sink. I mean, we'll come back and deal with it.
Okay.
Well, the yards, though, I mean, they're not compacting around those curb stops.
Yeah, but the roads, you know, the roads are pretty beat up.
Yeah, you're right. You're right.
But if those patches sink, then they have to redo them.
That's what I wanted to know. Yeah, I just wanted to know. Because some of them got laid when it was pretty rainy.
There is money put in this job to not only make that repair, but to make sure that that repair lasts for a long period of time. So the final payoff to these people is not going to be completed till lawn is reestablished, sidewalks are done, streets are repaired to the level that we feel it's acceptable.
Okay.
Okay.
I make the motion. Will you adjourn?
I'll second.
Further discussion. I'm sure you say aye?
Aye.
That ends this meeting of 1 hour and 25 minutes for our TV audience.